Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We're just a minute or two away from beginning the meeting. I think we've got Mark Fujarus on Zoom. Mark, can you hear me? I'll try one more time. Okay, thank you, Mark.
That's a big delay.
Yeah. You might want to vote before we ask for it. Yeah, thanks for joining us. But anyway, we're just a couple of minutes away from starting. Before we begin, I'd invite you to stand and join me in the pledge, and then Jeff Watson will bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to be here tonight to serve our community and to work and try to make our community a better place. We are so very thankful for all of the people, all the employees, all the people that worked so hard to make our community safe. We thank you for them, and we ask that you please be with them and continue to provide safety for them. Lord, we are so very thankful for all the gifts and the blessings that you provide for us, and we ask that you continue to bless our community. We ask that you be with all those tonight that are suffering with physical and mental illness. Ask that you please bring healing and comfort to them and their families. Lord, we thank you so very much for the forgiveness of our sins. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jeff. All right. Welcome again to this regular meeting of Springdale City Council. We are, this is Tuesday, September 27, 2022, and we'll start things off by asking our city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Sprouse.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Amelia Williams.
Here.
Jeff Watson.
Here.
Mike Overton.
Mike Lawson.
Here.
Rex Bailey.
Here.
Randall Harriman.
Here.
Mark Fujarus.
Here.
Ernest Cate.
Here.
All right, thank you. We do have large print versions of the agenda available. If anyone, if that would be helpful to anyone. Colby's got them there by the podium. We'll move on now to item number five, which is comments from our citizens. If we have any residents that would like to address the council, we ask that you go to the podium, clearly state your name and address. Please keep your comments brief and understand that we won't be taking action on anything you bring forward tonight. Is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? Yes, I feel, go right on it. Colby, yeah, Colby, thank you. Make sure that's on.
Good evening, my name is Lou Beal, and my address is 4960 Spring House Drive in Springdale. Did you say my phone number as well? So, no. So, my name is Lou Beal, and I'm a therapeutic foster care program manager for Arissa Health. And today, I just want to say it's your lucky day. I'm not here to ask for money. I'm not here to ask you to change or amend an ordinance, but I do ask that I educate you all about a crisis that is lurking in our community, which is the lack of foster care homes, but not just traditional foster care homes, therapeutic foster care homes. In Washington, Benton, Carroll, and Madison County, there are 598 foster care children in our northwest Arkansas. 304 are in Washington County, and 184 are in Benton County. Still, there are only 200 foster homes in our four county area, which means there are only enough foster care homes for 33% of our kiddos. Of the 200 foster care homes in northwest Arkansas, five of them are TFC homes, and one of the TFC homes actually resides in Springdale. So I'm very grateful for the Perez family. My goal tonight is just to discuss three things. Educate the council on what therapeutic foster care is, TFC, also known as TFC. What is the difference between traditional foster care versus therapeutic foster care? And finally, what is the call to action? So, TFC, children who come into foster care all get assessed on how much trauma they have had to endure. Children are tiered from either one through three. If a child is a tier two or three, they qualify to be placed in a therapeutic foster home. Before a family can open up as a TFC home, they have to go through 30 hours of specialized trauma-informed training. Then from there, they have to obtain 24 hours of training each year. Furthermore, a TFC home will have a therapist in the home each week for the first 12 weeks, a kiddo that is being placed in that home. Once the 12 weeks are up, the intense therapy continues in on the clinic, continues on in the clinic once a week until the child is either reunited with a family or adoption takes place. Therapy is not just for the child, it's also for the therapeutic family. This helps the family understand how to walk alongside the child and their trauma. Additionally, these families are well compensated due to the high energy and time that goes into providing high-quality foster care environment. What is the difference between foster care and TFC? Traditional foster care will have a DHS worker in the home once a month rather than a therapist once a week for 12 weeks. The problem is, there are children who are tiered two and three placed in a traditional foster home, mainly because there are not enough TFC homes. The foster parents have not been trained to have endured this intense trauma with the children. Because a traditional foster care home has not been trained for children with such trauma, the home gets disrupted, and the kiddos are given back to DHS to find another home. Furthermore, the board payment is about three and a half times less than that of a TFC home. So my call to action to the committee and folks in this room is to spread the word. Tell at least 10 people over the next week or next two weeks about the crisis in our community. Let them know that there are many children who need therapeutic foster care. Reach out to anyone in your inner circle of people that you think might be a good fit for becoming a TFC home. I feel the more I can educate our community about the lurking crises, more folks will be aware of what to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lou, and thank you for being here and for spreading that important message. If, Colby, right there beside you, if you have a, do you have what you've presented in printed form?
Yes, sir. Not right now, but I can email it to whomever.
If you can, if you can email that to Colby, and we'll help, we'll help use our social media to push that out. All right?
I appreciate that, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll move on to item six, approval of minutes. Counsel, you've had an opportunity to look over the minutes. If there are no other additions or changes, I would entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay.
Was that a delay?
That was a delay, I think. All right. Item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, counsel?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for both A and B. Roll call, please.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujarus.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I've got a couple of recognitions to do, and I will meet, let's start with Sue, I think you and Christie, Christie, tonight, we're honoring Christie Penalto, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna give Christie a little gift from the city here, and then, and I think Sue will, will give you some more information about Christie and why she's being honored tonight. Christie, thank you for all that you do for the city of Springdale, and please accept that as a token of our appreciation.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Sue Bowman, and I'm the clerk for the District Court of the City of Springdale. And we're excited to have this opportunity to recognize one of our employees. Christie Penalto is a blessing to our office. Christie started with the court in February of 2019. She's a dedicated, hardworking, and pleasant member of our work family. She's always willing to help others, clients, as well as coworkers. And she has the ability to perform many different job duties, and she's willing and helps train other clerks as we hire new people and move them to different jobs. Christie is a personable coworker who always brightens your day with a smile. Thank you, Christie, for all that you do for us.
Thank you, Sue. I didn't prepare a speech, but I do want to say that it's easy to have a good attitude when I get to come work with people that I love every day.
Okay, now I'm gonna ask Marcia Ransom to come join me at the podium. We're gonna recognize a decision I've been dreading. But Marcia has led our library for 26 years, and we're gonna truly hate to see her go. But we, at the same time, we wish her well in her retirement. I asked her on the way up here, what are you gonna do? And she said, I don't have a clue. So, but, but I know, I know she'll stay busy. And, and we're, we're just so thankful, Marcia, for all the years that you've given to the city of Springdale. And, and you've led with excellence, and, and on behalf of the city, we appreciate that very much and appreciate the job you've done. Please accept this as a small token of our appreciation. And if you'd like to say anything, feel free.
Well, I won't give a big speech. I'll just say thank you for the opportunity to serve, and that it's been a pleasure and an honor. And I think we've come full circle because Rex Bailey's back.
All right. We are now at item 10, and I'll go ahead and read this. We, we added this, Angie, Angie came at the end of the committee meeting, and we discussed the restoration of the log cabin at Shallow Museum. And she said the foundation, the board has agreed that they're, this is a project they're taking on and paying for. But we all thought it would be a great opportunity for the council to at least express their appreciation and the support, them recognizing the importance of the structure, and, and thank our, thank our museum board for, for taking this on. So Angie, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, good evening. As you can see, there's a picture of the interior of the cabin and the exterior. It sits right off the Razorback Greenway over there on our grounds. And there's a couple of bullet points there. We know that it was probably built in 1854, which is even pretty early for around here, and moved to the Shiloh grounds in 1981. Sorry, it was log dated in 1981. And we know that Confederate soldier mentions it in his letters. And in 1866 to probably about 1912, the Ritter family owned it, which is why it's called the Ritter-McDonald Cabin. And that Ritter family, the original one, is the great-grandfather of Springdale Mayor Roy Ritter. So it has some extra special connection there. It was moved to our grounds in 1979, moved again when they tore down the old library and built the new museum building in 1991. It moved to where it is now. And since 2011, we've been trying to get this renovation done. And as you know, costs only go up and conditions only go down. So it's significant at this time. We've been through the whole contractor process, and the board voted last week to expend $140,000 on its renovation. And hopefully, we can have this done by the end of the year, after 11 years of working on it. So we're just hoping for, I think our board just wanted to make a connection with the council and make sure that the city and our board were just sort of understanding what we're all up to.
All right, thank you, Angie. I'll, I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution expressing support for the log cabin restoration project at Shallow Museum.
The resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? All right, Denise?
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujarus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Carrie 7-0.
Great. Angie, thank you, and please, please extend our appreciation to the, to the board, and look forward to seeing the work get done.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
Before we get started with the police and fire, would you allow me to say something about Marcia? And she's just now leaving.
Marcia?
Let's get, yeah.
That's all right, that's okay. I just.
Well, we can, yeah, let Colby get her. She's already told me she doesn't have anything to do.
You know, it was funny that Marcia said about going full circle and Rex Bailey being back on here, because Rex and I, well, Rex came on for a second time about the same time that I started. I think Marcia had been here maybe a couple of years at that point in time, but Rex talked me into being the chairman of the finance committee. And back in those days, we didn't have ARPA money and, you know, and of course, it wasn't like it was in 2009, but, but still, times were hard and money was always tight. And the thing about the library and the museum, there's always, you know, we're always trying to make sure our police department, our fire department, and our streets have money. And then, you know, during finance time, then we get to libraries and museums and parks and things like that. And to be honest with you, Rex and I probably, at first, were kind of hard on Marcia, I would say. And I apologize for that, Marcia. But I tell you what, she was always so prepared for those finance meetings, and I've just been so impressed throughout her 26 years with the job that she's done for the library, and I just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Jeff.
You did win, when it spoke over. Okay.
That's great, thanks, Marcia. All right. Item 11, Police and Fire Committee Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We had three items come before us at the last committee meeting, and they were all forwarded with recommendations for approval. The first one tonight, I'll read the resolution, is a resolution to appropriate funds for capital equipment purchase for the Springdale Police Department to be paid from drug seizure funds. In fact, we've got Jeff Taylor up here, gonna talk about this tonight.
You have anything you need to bring forward, Jeff, on this?
Yeah, we're just asking to transfer money from our drug seizure fund to buy some capital equipment purchases. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any from the council.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anybody in the room? Hey, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujarus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Carrie 7-0.
Thank you.
Next item we have is a resolution waiving competitive bidding and authorizing the purchase of helmets for the fire department. And the way this was brought forward is that we will, we do this in a prepayment that we will save quite a bit of money, it looks like. And Chief Holtz here to address any questions we have.
Yeah, this, first request is to, is to replace all of our fire helmets at one purchase using money from Act 833, which is a fire department-dedicated fund.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution. And again, that's, that's 11B to adopt the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Anyone?
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujarus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
The emergency clause be adopted. Second.
Fujarus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries 7-0.
As usual, the emergency clauses are included because there are pending actions on this piece of property. The next item is a request to rezone 5.95 acres located at 636 North 40th Street. The request is to rezone the property from A1 Agriculture District to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5. Planning Commission review this request and recommends approval. Title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307", the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from Agriculture District A1 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5, declaring an emergency. And you can see, that's a plat of that piece of property. It's kind of an unusual with a small amount of frontage on 40th Street.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujarus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries 7-0.
The next request is to rezone .58 acres located at 4470 North Thompson. The request is to rezone the property from General Commercial District C2 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307", the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C2 to Thoroughfare Commercial District C5, declaring an emergency.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Watson.
Rick Hughes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujarus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujarus.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Ordinance carries 6-0, emergency clause carries 7-0.
The next request is to rezone .89 acres located at 1107 and 1121 West Huntsville. The request is to rezone the property from medium-density multifamily residential MF12 to General Commercial District C2. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307", the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from medium-density multifamily residential district MF12 to General Commercial District C2, declaring an emergency.
Is there any issues that may...
No. You can see, there's a lot of commercial area in that, and the school district owns the property to the south of it.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? All right, Denise?
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujarus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries 7-0.
The next request is to rezone .57 acres located south of Don Thompson Parkway, west of 48th Street. And before anybody asks, I can't really tell you how we got this narrow strip that didn't get zoned. But somehow, in all of that, when the other property was rezoned, we got this one missed. Actually, I think the adjacent, the property owner to the south actually bought a little narrow strip up through there, and I think that may be how that happened. But anyway. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads, "An Ordinance Submitting Ordinance Number 3307", the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto, by rezoning certain lands from Agriculture District A1 to General Commercial District C2, declaring an emergency.
Move orders pass. Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions from anyone? All right, Denise?
Fujarus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey.
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fujarus.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes, ma'am.
The emergency clause be adopted. Second.
Lawson. and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C-two to Thoroughfare Commercial District C-five and declaring an emergency.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion of second to adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone?
Watson?
Rick Hughes?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes, ma'am.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Ordinance carries six zero, emergency clause carries seven zero.
The next request is to rezone point eight-nine acres located at eleven oh seven and eleven twenty-one West Huntsville. The request is to rezone the property from medium-density multifamily residential MF twelve to General Commercial District C-two. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance submitting ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from medium-density multifamily residential district MF twelve to General Commercial District C-two and declaring an emergency.
Is there any issues that, that name, the neighbors?
No. You can see there's a lot of commercial area in that, and the school district owns the property to the south of it.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion of second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? All right, Denise?
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
The next request is to rezone point five-seven acres located south of Don Thompson Parkway, west of Forty-Eighth Street. And before anybody asks, I can't really tell you how we got this narrow strip that didn't get zoned. But somehow in all of that, when the other property was rezoned, we got this one missed. Actually, I think the adjacent, the property owner to the south actually bought a little narrow strip up through there, and I think that may be how that happened. But anyway. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. Title of the ordinance reads an ordinance submitting ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A-one to General Commercial District C-two and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, got a motion of second. Any further comments or questions from anyone? All right, Denise?
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
The next request is to rezone one point nine acres located at fifty-one ninety-one and fifty-one forty-seven Harbor Avenue from Agricultural District A-one and Neighborhood Office District O-one to General Commercial District C-two. Planning Commission recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance submitting ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A-one and Neighborhood Office District O-one to General Commercial District C-two and declaring an emergency.
Was there opposition to this?
I don't believe so, no.
Doesn't quite seem to fit in the land use.
Well, i- if you look at this whole area out in here, I think we're seeing a trend of redevelopment of that area that's going to show something different than what we have now. It's kind of on the edge of Oak Grove. And that property to the, to the west of it has the, the Montessori School on it. I think we'll see some other redevelopment in that area. But this kind of lines up with using Oak Grove as kind of a barrier to the, or a break in that commercial to the residential. It goes over a little bit because it's the size of the track.
It does what?
It goes a little bit beyond to the west of Oak Grove, but that's the size of the track that's there. It doesn't line up directly with Oak Grove Road. It's had that O-one there for quite some time, and now this is just bringing the rest of it to a commercial use. As I said, I think we're
It's had what there for quite some time?
I'm sorry, the O-one has been for quite some time, yeah.
The O-one?
Yeah.
What, what, what's the name of that O-one?
Well, no one allows for it to either be an office or a residential use, and I think it's kind of been a blend of two different things over the years. I don't really know for sure. I don't, can't tell you what the business license was at that location, but.
But there's no C-two anywhere close to this, is there?
Well, there's some C-two uses that came into the city as seat, as commercial uses that haven't been rezoned because the property owner hasn't requested that. You know? Yeah, there's some across the street to the north of it, all that area on the north. But, yeah. Uh, there's the, the sign shop. We've, we've rezoned two or three pieces down through there using, kind of using Oak Grove as that break between the two.
So, you're thinking to the east of Oak Grove would be commercial?
Mm-hmm.
And to the west would be residential?
Mm-hmm, because most of that on that side is already developed as single-family residential. We've done some recently to add multifamily. When you get to the north of that, there's two multifamily tracks going in north of it. Now, when you get all the way to, um, Elm Springs Road, it may be different. We may see some commercial at the intersection of Elm Springs and Oak Grove, because we've, we've got some on the other side. Uh, but this, this is not, and a C-two's not, is not as expansive of a commercial district as it used to be. I mean, you know, we've, we've cut it down. You can't put car lots in there. You can't put, uh, you know, heavy commercial type things. You can't have anything that has a drive, a drive-through lane or any of that kind of th- stuff. So, it's, it's not, it's a, it's a step higher than a neighborhood commercial, but it's not an extensive thoroughfare or arterial-type commercial development.
What about to the south? What, what kind of the plan, land use plan to the south?
Well, we just did the property just to the south of this at the end of Central Drive, if you go on down there. This backs up to all the Mathias stuff where the creek goes through. And then there's commercial along, uh, you know, that, there's that big area that was owned by a family trust that I think is just now going through some divisions of that piece of property because the trust is being split up. So, I think we're going to see some other kind of things. The other side of Forty-Eighth Street has all commercial. You get down to the Honda Place, the storage units that just went in. You, you, you're looking at a commercial area along Forty-Eighth Street from Elm Springs Road all the way down to four twelve. And here we're using Oak Grove, or that area is kind of the boundary between the two.
So, these SF twos right next door, those, at least one of those was told that we have a public hearing, right? They're notified?
Yes, yeah, they were. All, all the adjacent property owners were notified.
Okay.
That, yeah, that it was going commercial. And I think those got rezoned to SF two because they actually split the lot. And the lot wasn't big enough to be, to remain A-one, so to keep two houses on it, they had to have it split. That's how a lot of that time, stuff happens at the time. And then we rezoned the property to the south of that that has an access easement up there for the Montessori School that's in there. And that's been several years ago, too.
Where's the PUD that we just did in relations to this property? Is it to the west?
It's, it's to the west.
Further west.
When you get all the way over to, to Jean George.
Yeah.
There's probably at least one, maybe two properties before you get to the, to the roundabout over there. Yeah.
And I think this makes sense once Harbor Avenue is extended.
Mm-hmm.
I think that would make sense. Looking at it now, I can see why there's some questions, but.
Yeah. Lot of activity going on in that area, and I think the, the Jean George Boulevard extension has created a different atmosphere in that area. The extension of the two roads will still impact some of that, too, and I think we're going to see that different kind of development. I don't think this area on the east side of Oak Grove will ever be all residential development. There's too much traffic over in that area.
And as, as you mentioned earlier, the A-one, the big area of A-one, that just came into the city that way. There's some non-conforming uses that are, that are commercial that they've just never bothered to get rezoned.
Correct.
Right.
Right. And as long as they don't expand the size of the structure or anything in it, you know, it can go from one business to the other as long as it doesn't lapse for more than six months. And if there's not a business license for more than six months, then they would have to come and get a rezoning to be able to open a commercial development at that location, too. You got the creek on the, on the south side. You're looking at, you know, the, the master trail plan shows that connection of the trail from Harbor Avenue, from Harbor High School to Springdale High School that goes along that, too. And so, that, that creates a different atmosphere for some of this that could be some trail-related activities that go along as that trail is developed through there, too. So, it's a change in what's there now. And we, we have set up Jean George so the trail can go underneath Jean, Jean George, and, uh, we got the trail easement on the Grace Crossing that we just talked about last month. And so, the plans are going together to get that trail developed through there, too, as development occurs.
So, just to clarify, we're looking at what's highlighted in yellow and the O-one next to it?
And the O-one, too, right.
And the one right in between them, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's that, when you put all those together. Yeah.
I move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? Kay Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Second.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
The next item is to rezone nineteen point five acres located at fifteen oh six Shady Grove Road. The request is to rezone the property from Agricultural District A-one to General Commercial District C-two. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance submitting ordinance number thirty-three oh seven, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A-one to General Commercial District C-two and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Any further questions or comments? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams? Watson?
Yes.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
The next item is a request to accept the replat of lots four through eight of Conestoga Park. Uh, this is the lots just south of Wagon Wheel Road. Uh, the request is to combine all of those into two lots. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends, or this replat, and recommends approval. The title of the ordinance reads an ordinance accepting the replat of lots four through eight, Conestoga Park, to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and declaring an emergency. Uh, you know where the, um, rental, the equipment rental is on, on, uh, Wagon Wheel Road, and White Oak is across, it's that street that goes to the south, and it's the lots at the very end of that. Past the, uh, cata, is it Caterpillar? I think it's the Caterpillar Place. The Caterpillar Place is, is, uh, adding on or building a new structure just to the north of this, and it's our, it's under construction.
Move the ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? All right, Denise?
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries seven zero.
Is that, uh, is that street a private street?
No, it's a public street.
It's a public street.
Okay, it's a public street, yes. The next item is a request for approval of a conditional use for a tandem lot split. Uh, this property is located at seventy-nine ninety-three West Miller Road, and you can see on this, uh, informal plat how they're, uh, splitting these, this property into two lots. They also asked for a variance for the lot frontage along, uh, the street, and Planning Commission granted that variance. Planning Commission recommends approval of this, uh, conditional use for a tandem lot split. Uh, title of the ordinance reads, or the resolution reads, a resolution approving a conditional use at seventy-nine ninety-three West Miller Road is set forth in ordinance number forty-thirty.
So, what's the deal about the frontage? It typically would have to be more front-
It would have to be two hundred foot of frontage because they wanted it to remain A-one for each lot, and they can't get two hundred foot of frontage for each lot. And so, the Planning Commission granted the variance to allow the frontage to be what's shown on this for each of the lots. And they have to have an access easement approved, and we got through the septic system approvals and all that kind of stuff, too.
So, this is zoned agricultural?
Correct.
But it's a, it's in a subdivision? It is a sub, it's not a subdivision?
Not a subdivision. This will be an informal lot. What you're actually doing is, is approving a, a tandem lot or an informal plat to allow two different lots to go on this one. It's kind of an odd situation, and it's an odd-shaped lot with the majority of, to meet the requirements for the A-one zone in the back, not at the front, but it meets the minimum requirements. It's just kind of a different one. And the access is actually on one lot and not on the other. That's why it's tandem, because it only has one access point on the road itself. I'm sorry?
What is West Miller Road?
It's across six twelve.
Yeah, uh.
It run, it runs to, it
It runs out to
Runs to one twelve.
To one twelve.
Yeah.
Uh, Shaw Elementary School is just south of this on the other side of
Yeah.
Of, uh, six twelve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the resolution. Any other questions? Anybody comments? Anyone in the room? Kay Denise?
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Carrier seven zero.
The next item is a resolution to approve a conditional use for a use unit five, an institutional facility in A-one district at twelve thirty-two Stoltz Road. Uh, some of you may recognize this is the old Rocking Cherry Inn. They are, it has closed down, and they are asking for a, uh, conditional use to open it back up for a similar type facility, and it being a conditional use, it has to be a new one, the new person coming in and asking for the conditional use. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval. Um, with the conditions that they get the necessary permits from state agencies and improvements required by the adopted building and fire codes to the structure itself. Um, the title of the resolution reads, a resolution approving a conditional use at twelve thirty-two Stoltz Road, set forth in ordinance number forty-thirty. And you can see it's the area, we had already split out a little area out of that for a single-family homeless there, and that's not part of that. And you can see where they're adding, that's the existing structure, and they're providing the required parking spaces as needed for the structure, and they already have paid ac, paved access, and those are the two drives that are existing. And there will, there's a shared access easement with the house to be able to use that other drive, too.
So, what are our notice requirements for, uh, conditional use?
Same thing as rezoning. All the adjacent property owners get notified by certified mail return receipt request.
Is there a sign placed on the property?
There's a sign placed on the property as well, yes.
Was there any, uh, opposition?
No. There's a new, you know, there's a residential care facility just right down the street on the corner that's being more than doubled in size. So, those, those facilities have been on this street for a really long time. It came into the city with that in operation.
It used to be in Bethel Heights, didn't it?
Mm-hmm, no.
Oh, it was.
I don't think it was ever in Bethel Heights. It was in the county. It came into the city, but I don't think it was ever in, in Bethel Heights. Now, the property just to the north of it was, but this wasn't.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion of second to approve the resolution. Any other comments? Anyone? Kay Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Carrier seven zero.
The next item is the, a request for a conditional use for a use unit twenty-four, which is a dedicated warehouse, and a use unit twenty-five, which is limited manufacturing in this C-five district. Uh, the Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommends approval with the, um, condition that we need more detail on a site plan to determine if the conditional uses proposed are acceptable in that they can meet all the parking requirements and all those things. And they just want to know that they can get the conditional use before they spend the money, having all the design work and everything done. You can see that two structures will fit there. Those are two acceptable uses that would be as a conditional use. They're granted to this, this applicant at that location only. They're not, they'd have to be transferred if something else came along for that, and the property owner understands that, too.
Unless they not follow through, then it's
Right. Right. They can still use the property for anything that is a permitted use in that zoning district, but if they want to use these two specific uses, which is limited manufacturing and dedicated warehouses, they have the ability to do that. But they still have to go through non-large scale and all that kind of stuff to be able to, to get a permit to build and to operate.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion of second. Anybody have anything else before we vote? Okay, Denise?
Watson?[1598.21]
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey? Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Harry 7-0.
The next item is a request for a waiver of street improvements, drainages, curb gutters, and sidewalks with a preliminary plat for Springdale Best Stories QOF LLC. The reason they're asking for the waiver is so that the waiver, the actual street improvements on Emma and Castile Avenue can be done with a large-scale development plan when it's submitted for this piece of property. They need to split off the, those few lots, and they can't do that unless they are either bond for, or you grant them a waiver of the street improvements. The Planning Commission recommends that there be a bill of assurance for at least two years that the street improvements be completed in two years, and that's the Planning Commission's recommendation for this one, and the developer is aware of that. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Springdale's Best Stories QOF LLC in connection with preliminary plat 22-10, a preliminary plat, and it would be with option four, to deny the waiver and allow a bill of assurance for a period not to exceed two years for street improvements to East Emma and Castile Avenue. Drainage improvements included curb, scutter, sidewalks, and streetlights to be built with that in that two-year timeframe.
So option four is the Planning Commission's recommendation?
Right, right. We're denying the waiver. We're requiring a bill of assurance-
Okay.
-for two years.
What happens if it's not done in two years?
The bill of assurance can be called, and the city can go have the improvements done and put a lien on the property to reimburse the cost. That's the whole purpose of a bill of assurance. Now, they understand that, and what they want to be able to do is file the preliminary, you know, move forward with the preliminary plat, divide it into the lots they want to, go to the next step, get the final plat approved so they can move forward, but they know they have two years to do the street improvements.
So what if they just sit and don't do anything for 10 years?
Well, in two years, we call the bill of assurance and we go to the improvements.
What if we don't call the bill of assurances? Do we not do that?
We've extended some of them. I don't know that we've called any yet, because usually those kind of things come in, or they come in with a different project. We go back and do something different. This gives them a two-year timeframe to get this work done, and they need that on the front end to get started. It's not a standard way of doing it, but it's not just completely waiving it, and the taxpayers have to pick up that cost. It allows the developer to get some time to do it. It, it's, it's a good way to get this thing moved forward and getting started, I think. The Planning Commission was willing to work with them. I'm sorry?
How, how often do you do that?
We've done bill of assurances several times. Sometimes they don't have a time limit, but on this one, we wanted a two-year time limit so that we could go ahead and get it done and get the improvements done in that area as this thing moves forward. Yep.
Well, my problem with the two-year bill of assurances is after two years of nothing's done, the bill of assurances is gone.
Well, it's our responsibility, before that two-year timeframe is up, to either determine that the improvements have been done, call the bill of assurance, or bring them back in and decide what we're going to do to move forward. That's the options that we have. That's something that we, we track in our office and know when those things are coming up, and make contact with the developers and see what we can do, or if things are progressing like they should, we know. If not, we'll come back and, to Planning Commission and see what's the next step. What do we do next?
So it, if, if it goes two years-
Uh-huh.
Then we've got the option, as you said before, we've extended them.
Uh-huh.
But I, I would assume the council would take into consideration whether they're working on it-
Right.
-or whether they're not, they've just not done anything.
Yeah, and I think the Planning Commission would review that first and make a recommendation, where they think we need to pull a bill of assurance and ask them, go ahead and have the work done, or determine we want to void that and not let them move forward at all if nothing has happened, and that makes their preliminary plat is not valid anymore, and they have to start all over. You know, preliminary plat's only good for a year if you haven't started construction anyway, so we've got a year to, to make the first stab at seeing if things are moving on. It's, it's not perfect, but it's a way to kind of help move things forward a little bit easier in some of these tougher areas, and this is a lot of street improvement for us, for a tract that's not too big.
So this, this individual's pretty adamant to get this thing to proceed quickly?
That's what we were told, yes.
And the two years was a pretty conservative year for them, or was it a, who, who came up with two years?
I think in the negotiations, we talked about, would you be to a point where you could have this done in two years, and they felt like they could? You know?
Patsy, does that come back to the Planning Commission all year, or will it come back to us, the council eventually?
It comes back to the Planning Commission first, and then the, the Planning Commission will make a recommendation to the council, because basically, the Planning Commission cannot incur costs of doing street improvements, because they can't allocate money, so it comes back to you guys sometime in the future. Now, I, I would assume if they agree to go ahead and extend it a year, we may not necessarily bring that back if, if the Planning Commission recommends, and they're doing work on it, and construction is going like it should, and they just need, you know, three or four more months to get it done, we probably wouldn't come back with that. Yep.
What about street improvements on the Castile?
This is for both. This is for Emma Avenue and Castile.
This, it says Huntsville and Emma Avenues.
Option four says East Emma Avenue and Castile Avenues.
Okay.
Where does it say Huntsville?
Up at the top.
Second where is?
Yeah, okay. I didn't catch that one. I was reading the, the option four. We'll get that corrected.
So we're looking at Castile and Emma, but not the one behind, not the road behind the-
Well, that's the Greenway on, on the south side, and that's where the creek is, and it doesn't-
Yeah, it's Dean's Trail.
Yeah, it, yeah, I'm sorry. That's Dean's Trail, I'm sorry. It doesn't connect to it, and they don't even have access to it, because there's no crossing across the creek unless, unless you weigh the creek itself. And there might be times you can, it's dry, I don't know.
Move the resolution pass with option four.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
I, I'm a little surprised they didn't ask for a complete waiver on Castile.
Well, they're accessing it off of Castile.
They're what?
They're gonna access, they're gonna have accesses off of Castile. We wouldn't recommend that they get that complete waiver if they're gonna use it, because they will be creating a demand on that piece of property. I mean, on that street, and it's not much of a street right now.
So it's gonna increase the use of Castile.
Right. They'll do their half the street the full length, yes.
Any other questions, comments? Kay Denise?
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams? Watson?
Yes.
Harry 7-0.
The next item is a request for a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in connection with a preliminary plat for Whispering Springs. Their request is a waiver of street improvements on Howard Anderson Road, and what they are requesting, because they don't actually own that property, would be to build a 23-foot wide paved street with no curb and gutter on each side. So as the property on each side develops, they would be responsible to build from the edge of that 23 to build the drainage, curb, and gutter and sidewalks as those two pieces of property. They need that access as a second access into the subdivision so that it can move forward. Planning Commission recommends approval. And it's a resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks is set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Whispering Springs. It connects with preliminary plat 22-11, a preliminary plat, and it's really allowing them to, to build 23 feet of paved surface to Howard Anderson from Butterfield Coach to the entrance into this piece of property. And we, if you want to do that, we've got to put that in here somewhere. It's not really a payment in lieu of, it's not really a bill of assurance, so we got to create a whole new option if that's, if you guys are agreeable to let that happen.
So still have open drainage on both sides?
Right.
And, but it'll, it'll meet their need for access, including fire access.
It's similar to what we did at Watkins.
Right.
Only what we did with Watkins, we built the median and everything, and then we, we built two lanes on each side, or one lane on each side, until the property on each side was developed, and then as NWA came in, they, you know, they paid to do that side, and as the apartments came in on the, that side, we did the other side there, and it worked really well on that one.
So they'd be right away?
They would be dedicate, no, we would be working in the existing right of way that's there.
Okay.
We wouldn't have to acquire any additional right of, because they can't get the right of way. They don't own the property.
What about when, when further improvements are made?
They would have to dedicate the right of way to widen it out to master street plan standards. Yeah.
So they would finish it out from the 23 feet as the development happens?
Right. As the properties on each side are developed, they would be required to do, they would be required to build their half of the street anyway. It's just that there's 23-foot of pavement. In theory, it's, you know, half of it on each side, and that's, that's what they would be able to do.
We get a motion?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure how, how would you, how do you make the motion for what you're saying?
Well, Ernest has to be able to be comfortable with, and y'all have to be comfortable-
Yeah.
-with that change, or how that's worded.
So are we granting a waiver in street improvements to Howard Anderson Road in option one with the building of a 20-foot, 23-foot wide paved surface to city standards from Butterfield Coach, is that Butterfield Coach? Yes, from Butterfield Coach to the entrance in this property at Whispering Springs. That's what it needs to say. That, that needs to be changed to put that language in there. And Ernest and I can make sure we get that in there, in that, in that method, if you guys are willing to do that.
So we would, I'd entertain a so moved if y'all are agreeable to that.
And Denise and I'll make sure it gets in the minutes that way, and Ernest and I'll make sure the resolution gets written that way. This is a kind of a unique situation. As stated? Okay.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further comment or questions? Denise?
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams? Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Harry 7-0.
I probably was going to table it, had you not got your second.
I was gonna say, that's pretty good to struggle for a second and then get a unanimous vote, but.
I, I can say, and I tell planning commissioners all the time, the easy stuff's already been done.
Yeah.
We're out there developing the tougher pieces of property right now, and this is, this one's had some other challenges. The next request is a waiver of sidewalk improvements in connection with a single-family home being built at 6495 Copperhead Road. Planning Commission recommends approval of the waiver with option one. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb, gutters, and sidewalks, set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Nick and Jill Schmidt in connection 6495 Copperhead Road, a single-family dwelling." And it's-
Resolution pass with option one. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is Copperhead Road along the north edge? Trying to figure out where Copperhead Road is.
It, it has a weird, it has a weird address out there, but-
Okay, all right. Well, it's not that, it doesn't matter. I'm just curious. We got, we do have a motion and a second. Any further comments and question, or questions? Denise?
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harry 7-0.
And the next request is a request for a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in connection with a County Line Commercial Park, large-scale number L22-51. The Planning Commission is recommending option three, approved payment in lieu of improvements to East County Line Road. If you'll notice, it's a pretty small section. I don't know that it would be in the best interest to, to improve that little section, and they're willing to make payment in lieu of improvements, so the Planning Commission's recommending option three. Title of the resolution re, I already read the title of the resolution, so.
Okay, a motion and a second. To approve. Any other questions or comments? Kay Denise?
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams? Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Harry 7-0.
All right, thank you, Patsy. Item 13, Finance Committee Chairman Jeff Watson.
The only item from the Finance Committee had to do with the city's contract with the Springdale Chamber of Commerce for promotion of business development and economic growth. I'll read the title to this resolution. "A resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to enter into an agreement with the Springdale Chamber of Commerce to promote business development and economic growth, to waive competitive bidding and for other purposes. This resolution was forwarded from the Finance Committee with recommendation for approval."
The resolution passed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Just for, just for folks who may be watching, give us the, Kobe, or Bill, either one, just give us the-
Just?
Quick.
Sure, thi, this is a, a contract that is a two-year contract. Typically, well, this will end on December 31st of this year. We wanted to go ahead and get it out in front of you before the budget, so you would know whether or not there was changes in the request. There are no changes in the amount of money. It's for $225,000, as it was last year, but we just wanted to make sure we had that in our minds going into the budget discussion. So we're, this is going to be through 2023 and 2024.
And Bill, we were asked, I think it was Randall brought up a question in committee. It would be helpful, I think, to the council to, with your, at le, at least with your quarterly economic development reports, to go ahead and give us some of the, it's basically, it sounds to me like the same thing you give the A and P Commission every meeting, but about, about-
I think it was the CLICs.
Social outreach, yeah, social, social media outreach and that, yeah.
And I, I did see those comments, and that is, I think, I think it was Mr. Overton that was, said he'd been enlightened by some of that information, happy to do that. I, I know y'all like us to keep those quarterly reports short, but I think we can do both and, and let you know what's going on in that area as well.
Okay.
So happy to do it.
That work, Randall? Okay, good deal. We got a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Kay Denise?
Hal?
Yes.
Williams? Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Harry 7-0.
Item 14, Committee of the Whole. I think I'm gonna turn that over to Ernest unless, did somebody take that at committee, or did Ernest just take it?
I think Brian did.
You, go ahead, Brian.
So we had this resolution come before us, Committee of the Whole, and certain some property the city of Springdale owns. I'll read the resolution. "Resolution authorizing the execution of a temporary use agreement on property owned by the city of Springdale, Arkansas." And Ernest, can you expand on that, please?
Sure. The city owns the, the parcels that are outlined on page 69, and it would allow them to have staging of equipment and materials for the project that's being developed on adjacent property, adjacent to the south of this. At committee, it was requested that language be added, that in the event that the city wanted to make improvements to Emma Avenue, that they would give way and not interfere with that, and that has been added. It just didn't get put in the, the packet, but they have agreed to that added language. And it would expire on April 20, April 1st of 2024, but we have the option if we were to receive an offer from someone to purchase that property, that we could have them off there in 30 days, and they're to, they're responsible for returning it back to the condition that it was in before. We've used a similar arrangement for the, or the Public Utilities Board did for the Ford Avenue project. They had a piece of property that the contractor was able to, to use, and it, it worked out fairly well.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions? Comments? All right, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Harry 7-0.
All right, the next two items are an annual resolution we have to pass. I'm gonna turn those over to Ernest.
Thank you. The first one is a resolution to levy Benton County Avalorum taxes of the city of Springdale, Arkansas. There's no changes.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Harry 7-0. And the next one is a resolution to levy Washington County Avalorum taxes of the city of Springdale, Arkansas. No changes.
Move the resolution be adopted.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lawson?
Yes ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes ma'am.
Harriman?
Yes ma'am.
Fugiruse?
Yes ma'am.
Hal?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Harry 7-0. The next item, I, I mentioned this at, at committee that I was gonna be bringing this forward. I'll go ahead and read the title of the resolution. It's "A resolution authorizing the execution of a temporary use agreement on property owned by the city of Springdale, Arkansas." This is for the First Security Bank project by Shallow Square, and it's only for a 60-day time period for them to conduct geotechnical investigation on the property.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions?
Where is this property?
For Security.
Right next to Shallow Square.
It's part of the First Security Bank project. What, it used to be First Security Bank? Yeah, it's yeah, it is. It's it's in the Mill Street. Yeah, or Mill Street was.
It's basically where the trail is.
Yeah, closed.
No.
So for 60 days, will it be interfering with the trail in any way?
Any other questions? All right.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman? Fidjirous?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Carry seven zero. The last item is an ordinance authorizing a city clerk to file cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springdale, Arkansas and declaring emergency. It's on property located at 2403 Tony. This is actually a property that we dealt with years ago, and then the property owner started taking care of it. She actually lives in Oklahoma, and now we're back again.
Move ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the ordinance. Anybody in the room need to speak to this property? Okay, Denise?
Harriman? Fidjirous?
Yes.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Move merge clause.
Fidjirous? Fidjirous?
Yes.
Yes.
We got you, Mark. We got you, Mark.
Al?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
Harriman?
Ordinance pass the seven zero, emergency clause pass the six zero, since we didn't hear it, but it still passed.
Okay. Word item 19. Any comments from council members?
Yes.
You want to go first, Jim?
Go ahead.
Since Chad waited out the meeting, he received a couple of awards this last week or so with an individual and a event we run in conjunction with Rodeo of the Ozarks, and I'll let him be brief and explain.
Well, actually, we went to the State Parks and Recreation Convention in La Rock a month ago, and we put in for two awards and received two awards. One was for Young Professional of the Year, and my new recreation superintendent Tanner Spangler won that the whole state. So eventually I had I just hired him to be my superintendent for the rec. And then we put in one for the horse camp. It's a two-day camp at the Rodeo of the Ozarks, and we put it in, and we had 120 sign up in four hours. The only time we've had anything fill up so quick. This is our second year with it, and we decided to go ahead and put this into the state convention, and they gave it to us right away. So pretty proud of all those guys that they work hard doing all these camps and academies, and this makes, you know, our facility much better.
That's great. I imagine that horse camp is pretty unique. I mean, not every city has a facility like Parsons.
That's probably why we got it.
Yeah. I wasn't going there.
This is what they do.
I'm sure it's good.
They they learn the anatomy, grooming, and care. They get to ride a horse, paint a horse, and bathe a horse. They also get to learn to lasso, and they also get to meet the rodeo queen and learn basic rodeo functions.
What age?
I think we're talking eight to 12, maybe, eight to 14.
Okay.
I thought you were going to tell us that you got the Young Professional of the Year.
Yeah, they don't give out the old professional. I might eventually get it.
Yeah, congratulations to Tanner. That's great.
I'll tell them.
Hey, real quick, since you're up there, give us the latest on the rec center. I know you you filled the department heads in this morning.
Yeah, we it's been nine months since we started the elevator and the front entrance. We are waiting on three pieces of glass for our front entrance, and then we'll be fully open. Right now, we're still using the west side for entry, but they say by this week, which I've told the mayor, every two weeks I say it'll be this week, but it's it's been about three months since we've gotten glass.
But the elevator is.
Elevator's working, operating. It's been certified. We just we're not using it until we open the front.
Right. Well, I know I've said this before, and if you haven't been in the rec center lately, go in and see the new flooring and the and the the support court. It's really, really looks good in there.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Other council member?
So I was just going to ask again, I'm sure this has been asked before, but about the closure of Emma Avenue. And you said it was probably going to be a three-month closure?
Six.
I don't remember saying three months.
It's in February.
I think I think P I think Mike Peters said February or March, but that that was.
From is it closed now?
That's not right. Yeah, it closed this it closed middle of the day today. There's a, of course, you've got the contract days in your in your contract that you approved, but but if Patsy or Ben or anybody needs to weigh in on this, I know that we were hoping I think part of the delay, as was in the letter that we put out, part of the delay was the water department is has made a decision to upgrade some pipes that are in Emma Avenue. And and then also, we didn't want to close Emma at spring until we opened Park and and Emma. So so, yeah, but it's now they're saying, I think if you count up the days that are in the contract, it's they're looking at May, if close to the first of May, if then that's if the weather's the weather's good. Yeah, we delayed it almost six weeks while we were waiting on Park.
I guess what I was, and maybe it's way too late, obviously, but I was wondering if there's not any way to close one side or, you know, does the whole road have to be closed?
I think. I think it I think it's going to take a lot longer on the project if we close one side at a time. I think we're ripping the Band-Aid off and getting it done as quickly as we can.
Well, those poor people on the east on the east end have been closed for however many months already, and here we are closing it again on them.
Well, we're closing it. We're closing it from spring to to Holcomb. We're not closing it on East Emma, but, you know, this is a much this is a much easier detour than what we had before down at down at East Emma.
I guess I was just hoping from to hear some assurances that we looked at every possible option to keep from having to do it, or is there some way that we could do it any faster, rip the Band-Aid off faster?
We didn't put incentives in the contract. That that would have been the that would have been the best way to make that happen possibly, but but I, you know, Milestone's a good company, and we'll we'll push them at every every chance we can. They're also doing the the portion of the south of Emma on the Box Culvert, and and as Patsy said, we we delayed we delayed closing this section of Emma because the water department was part of that delay, but also we we wanted to make sure, for reasons you've just stated, we wanted to be sure that the other work was was open.
Well, it sounds like the only thing might be still in our control is the water department. We might have some influence on them, so I sure don't want be come December and be hearing, hey, the water department's holding us up.
Right. Yeah, I agree. I agree. I don't think we can legally do that, but they do they do all they do all have rear access, and the sidewalks are going to be, except for when the sidewalk is actually torn up in front of that business, they're going to be, you know, the sidewalks will be open also. Right. Well, and and that's I don't disagree with that. I don't disagree with that. DSA is going to have to I would count on DSA to do every bit of work they can to make sure that things are still going to happen down here. We'll still they'll still have their events. They'll still have we're still going to have the rodeo or the Christmas parade. It won't go it won't go through that section of Emma more than likely, but it it will still be a big gathering, and it'll. Christmas on the Creeks. All those events are still going to go on.
Can't hear her.
Oh, Patsy, yeah. Thanks, Mark. She's going to go to the mic.
Jill has been in contact with all the businesses so they know what's going on, and they are promoting each of the businesses through all their social media aspects. The events that were scheduled for October and Christmas on the Creek are still going on. We knew it was going to be closed in those timeframes, so everything's been adjusted. Every event that was scheduled for Shallow Square and Walter Turnbull Park hasn't been changed. We're doing square to square with the halfway halt will be on the on the Holcomb Street portion of that to encourage people to continue to go through with the trail. I mean, Jill's worked really hard at talking with the businesses. It it just sometime it's got to be done, and unfortunately, it's taking a little bit longer than we expected because of the water line changes, but it now's the time to do it so we don't have to go back and close it again.
Right. Process process always precedes product, and I think everybody, even the even the at least the the business owners down there that I've heard from, I know it's it they're looking for a tough time, and they they want to try and have people drive business down to their businesses as good as well as possible, but they're looking at the end product, too.
Right. And I think it's important that all of us. Go to those businesses and help them out during this time, you know, come downtown and eat, shop downtown as much as you can, because we all need to support them, not just now, but throughout all of this to make sure that they all do well. And it it's a tough time, but they all know what the end product's going to be, and we're going to have a better situation when we get done.
Keep in mind.
All of us need to encourage everybody we know.
Right.
To come downtown as much as you can to support the businesses that are downtown.
And there aren't very many, I mean, the ones that are there are important, but but we're only dealing with a handful of businesses in the section of Emma that's going to be closed. And we need to help them, so.
To Amelia's point, it's not necessarily businesses right there. It's getting to the other ones that are also going to be affected.
I I think it'll be affected until somebody does it, and then they'll see it's really not a problem. I'm talking about the people coming to the businesses. They'll get to them. But but again, we're we're doing this. We've got a $3.1 million grant. City of Springdale is going to put what some just north of a million in it as part of the streetscape work. And and we're getting quite a bargain, and it's going to be a it's going to be a huge deal for downtown from now on. So but we will, and and we'll, Ben, let's talk to them about the op any options that could possibly speed it up. We'll be happy to do that.
Well, I think Milestone is is a good corporate sponsor in Springdale. They're going to do everything that they can to move it forward, but times are hard to get things, and I know they've been ordering waterline and fittings and trying to get all this stuff in, and we weren't going to open it till we were pretty sure we were ready to start, and then we had to make a few changes. And we did talk about the option, can we close down one side and open one side?